Regarding a potential change of zone. But before we start our meeting, would you all mind rising for the pledge of allegiance? Okay. Julianne, could you please pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Present.
Julianne Nolan.
Present.
Gerald O'Neil.
Present.
Juan Leon.
Present.
Dan Trushen.
Present.
Frank Santos.
Present.
Greg Gaxiola.
Present.
Matt Esposito.
Present.
And Rich Casey.
Do we have a quorum?
Yes, you do.
Yes, we have six board members present, and that does represent a quorum. May I have to read this statement into the record before we begin this public hearing? The planning board shall have the right to rely on any information that is presented by the applicant. If any such information is later found to be inaccurate or incorrect, the planning board may determine that any approvals, building permits, or other actions previously granted in connection with the application are null and void. Before we announce the public hea—well, then why don't you announce the public hearing, then I'll read this.
Job number 24-51AE Lag Associates LLC proposes to demolish existing structures and requests a change of zone from E Business and C Residence to G Industry in order to construct a 17,048-square-foot footprint two-story area to site improvements.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you all for coming out tonight. We really appreciate it. As you know, this is a hearing to review the site plan and special use permit to operate a self-service facility. If the town is to consider the change of zone, another hearing before the town board will be held. So there'll be two public hearings possibly, but this is the first one. All of your written comments, and we have gotten many of them, will be read by the planning board, each and every one of us. And given the number of speakers, we ask that you don't debate other speakers. And to the best of your concern, repeat concerns, because we're paying careful attention to that. Simply say that you agree with the prior speaker's comments. So with that, I would ask that the counsel for the applicant address the board.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Nicole Blanda. I'm an attorney at Bazell, Blanda &amp; Viscanti with offices at 535 Broadhollow Road in Melville.
Okay, before you begin, the planning commissioner Denise Graziano issued a memorandum to the board regarding this application dated the 23rd of July 2025. There are a whole series of conditions as well as covenants and restrictions outlined or stated in the commissioner's memo. Have you had the opportunity to review them with your client? And does your client have any issues, any concerns that they would like to bring to our attention?
Yes, we have reviewed all of them, and my client consents to all of them. We have no issues or concerns.
Okay, to all of the conditions.
And covenants and restrictions, yes.
All of the covenants and restrictions. Okay, please proceed.
I'm here tonight on behalf of the property owner, seeking a recommendation for a change of zone from split-zone Business E/Residence C to Industry G. A special exception permit to allow a self-storage facility on the premises, and ultimately site plan approval from this board. The property is located at 849 Long Island Avenue in Deer Park. It's on the northwest corner of Long Island Avenue and Irving Avenue. It has a lot area of about 58,716.23 square feet with approximately 260 feet of frontage on Long Island Avenue and 301 feet of frontage on Irving Avenue. As the chairman indicated earlier, there will be multiple public hearings for various aspects of this application. So we're here tonight for the recommendation, the special permit, and the site plan. However, ultimately, the town board has jurisdiction over the change of zone. And should that go through, then we would have to go to the zoning board of appeals for two minor variances that I'll discuss later in my presentation. So as I said, it's presently split-zoned, as the north side of Long Island Avenue in this corridor is between Business E and Residence C in the rear. In the rear of this property, it's currently a parking lot. So that is the bulk of the portion that zoned Residence C, and that is the portion of the property that also abuts other Residence C properties. It's presently improved with a concrete masonry one-story building that has a CO from 1959 for a bowling alley. And there are parking areas, as you can see on the aerial and the survey, that are in the front yard. There's diagonal parking in the side yard, and then there's a parking lot in the rear yard. There's no landscaping to speak of really currently on the site, and we're looking to improve that as part of this application. So the owner is seeking to redevelop this site with a brand-new self-storage facility, which again requires ultimately us to go to the town board to rezone this site. From this board, we are asking for the special exception permit, and I will go into those standards shortly. We're proposing to demolish the existing building and construct a new two-story building with a footprint of 17,048 square feet to be used as the self-storage facility. Currently, the applicant/owner is in talks with public storage. This site will be entirely redeveloped with about 20,633 square feet being landscaping. We will comply with the 20-foot buffer requirement along the residentially-zoned properties. So along the westerly perimeter and the northerly property line, where there's no buffer presently, we will be providing a 20-foot buffer of mixed trees and arborvitae. Currently, the perimeter consists of asphalt and wall-to-wall building. The front yard along Long Island Avenue will be landscaped with grass, shrubs, and street trees. Along Irving Avenue, there will be arborvitae as screening for that area. And then within the 20-foot buffers that I previously mentioned, along the north side and the west side, there will be various trees. There will be two means of ingress and egress for this site. One curb cut will be located on Long Island Avenue for in and out, and one curb cut on Irving Avenue. Both curb cuts will have an indicator that there is a stop, like a stop sign, for people that are exiting the site. The proposed refuse enclosure would be located towards the rear of the proposed new building, but in front of the 20-foot buffer, so that it would be properly screened from any residence. Currently, the refuse enclosure is within the front yard next to the building. The refuse enclosure meets town specs, and it's been reviewed by the town DEC. Parking is proposed within the front yard of the site, which is currently where parking is located. And we've been able to eliminate the parking that was in the rear of the site, eliminating the additional asphalt from the site that abuts directly to the residentially-zoned properties. We meet the parking requirements. Self-storage requires one space per 2,000 square feet, so we're required to have 26 spaces. We are proposing 26 spaces, five of which, after discussions with the town, would be land-banked, meaning that these spaces are located within the front yard along Long Island Avenue, but that it's felt that a better use of that space would be for landscaping, to make it a more attractive streetscape for that area. So if those spaces were ever needed, we would be advised as such by the planning department or planning board, and the owner would have 60 days to install those five spaces. So in other words, if there was a parking problem and there were complaints, if there was spillover from the site, then the applicant would add these additional five spaces. We have two loading spaces directly in front of the building with the protective bollards and the proper loading zone signage. There are also two ADA-compliant spaces located near the front of the building as well. Along the east side of the building are the overhead doors for drive-up exterior accessible storage. The site will be well-lit with several new lighting poles that will all be dark sky compliant, so that is another requirement for the special permit, that there'll be no spillover to adjacent properties, and these lightings, these lighting poles will comply with the dark sky compliant requirement. The site will have all-new drainage, new concrete curbs and walks, new asphalt. We require two variances, both of which are somewhat existing conditions. One is to park within the front yard, which currently there is parking in the front yard. And our other variance is that our front yard setback exceeds 10 feet. At one point of the building, our front yard setback is 79.6 feet, so that is actually a variance that we need. We have a brand-new facade, which we believe is attractive. It's not your standard industrial-looking building. Public Storage keeps a very nice site and a very nice building. And I want to emphasize, there's no outside storage. We're not allowed to have outside storage on this site. There would be no place to have the outside storage. The inside of the building is all climate-controlled. It's secure. There's a lobby when you walk in. There's elevators that would take you to the second floor. There are units in the basement, the first floor, and the second floor. When we look at the special permit criteria, we do meet the minimum lot area of the one acre. The building does not exceed two stories. We're providing the landscaping and the decorative walls for the facades, the 20-foot buffer along the residentially-zoned properties. Our exterior lighting is dark sky compliant. We meet the parking, no outside storage, and we consent to all the covenants and conditions that have been requested. If we take a look at the surrounding area, it is a mixed-zone area. So to the south, we have industrially-zoned properties that are used in various ways, whether they be commercial or industrial. There is a strip shopping center directly across the street, as well as a 7-Eleven on the corner of Carl's Path and Long Island Avenue. There's also a large industrial building kind of south and to the west, which is for a trucking company. And then there are other commercial and industrial uses on that south side, and then you hit the railroad tracks. Directly to the north of us are the residentially-zoned and residentially-developed properties. And to the east of us, we have a little strip center with a Domino's and I believe a deli of some sort. And then we have more industrial properties, some masonry yards, et cetera.
Excuse me, sir.
There is a cube.
All right, well, timeout. Sir, we have—I'm—the council is dressing. Okay. Stop. Seriously. Everybody will get their opportunity, and I'll be more than happy to have you come up, but please proceed.
Thank you. So as the gentleman was saying, on the north, and as I was going to get to, on the north side of the street, to the east, there is a cube smart self-storage as you head down Long Island Avenue heading towards Grand Boulevard. So there is another self-storage facility in the area.
Matt, where is that self-storage? I'm just looking at this.
999.
Matt? Yes? 999? Could you—thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So what happens when corporations look at various sites that they want to choose, whether it be a self-storage facility, or a restaurant, or a shopping center, they do a market study. And so they see where they want to be based on the demand in the area. And part of what they look at is the amount of homes, as well as the amount of apartments in any given area. And then they also kind of try to predict future demand as well. And so for someone—for a company like Public Storage to even be interested in a site like this, they had to have done a market study that told them that they believe this would be a viable and profitable site for them. To the—like I said, to the north are residential properties, and I want to point out that this is a quiet industrial use, meaning there's no truck traffic coming here. We don't have tractor-trailers coming to the site. The trip generation, which my engineer will talk about, is very low. It's low even compared to the existing bowling alley. It's low compared to any retail uses. This is not going to be a site for manufacturing. This is not going to be a warehouse site where you have deliveries and things of that nature coming to the site. People—they move their stuff in, and most of the time, they don't come back until they're moving the stuff out, or they realize something's missing, and they come back to the site to get it. So it is a quiet use. We do believe it's not an onerous use for the area, and it would be a complete redevelopment. I also want to point out that the planning board would always have authority over any future changes or development on this site. It's not a one-and-done. This would—if this was to be approved, it's approved as a self-storage facility. Not easily convertible, but if someone in the future, years down the road, wanted to do that, they would have to come back into the town of Babylon and apply, just like anybody else would. Now, I do have our engineer Scott Risinger from Nelson &amp; Pope here with me tonight, and I'd like to be able to invite him up to speak a little bit about the site plan, if that's okay with the board.
Sure. Thank you. Sir, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Scott Risinger, Nelson &amp; Pope, 70 Maxus Road, Melville, New York, 11747.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please proceed.
So as Nicole mentioned, the site plan before us is providing more buffers than currently exists. We are meeting our parking standards. She went through the land-bank parking with you. What I'd like to address at this point is the traffic. And taking a look at some of our traffic numbers, the current bowling alley, according to the ITE Traffic Engineers studies that they do, bowling alleys of this nature—this bowling alley has 16 lanes in the house. Currently, we did a study for 14 lanes, so not even a packed or full house. We brought it down a little bit for only having 14 lanes.
Excuse me, could you speak up as you speak into the microphone?
Sorry.
So everybody can hear you.
So the ITE traffic numbers that we ran were for 14 lanes versus this is a full 16-lane house, so we were not even studying this at its full capacity. The ITE trip generation for a weekday would produce 21 trips in the AM and 63 trips in the PM, with a Saturday peak of 34 trips. When you look at a self-storage building of the size that is being proposed, weekdays AM, nine trips, PM, nine trips, and Saturdays still nine trips. So the traffic generation of the site is significantly less than what the current application—or the current use is for the property. And I think Nicole did a great job, so if you guys have any questions for us, we are available to answer them.
Do any of the board members have any questions? Engineer Juan?
Just, Matt, could you show us the landscaping in that buffer?
Okay, hold on. It's for the engineer, right?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Nothing to you.
Sorry.
No, you don't? Okay, all right. No questions for the engineer? All right, thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
I'm just curious. I'm just curious as to why you—even though it may be advantageous to the analysis—why did you assume 14 lanes and not 16?
You know, just to be conservative, and also, you know, you don't always have a packed bowling alley, so there's always some reduction in the number of people attending any venue.
And that wouldn't have been built in to the 16-lane analysis, too? Even though this may generate more trips, which makes a comparison different, I just find it funny that you did 14 and not 16.
We're going on the conservative end. If we want—if you want, I can come up with the numbers for a 16-lane, and—
Yeah, well, those numbers would undoubtedly be, for the bowling alley, more trips, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
There's no need to come up with additional numbers, unless you want to. Okay, Ms. Blanda? Okay, regarding a question, Jared?
If we could see the comparison of the existing buffer, if any, and how close the current building is to the residential properties as compared to the proposed site plan and the landscaping plan for that. So that building is right up against the west side of the property?
Yes. It might be a foot or a few inches off.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it's close. And in the rear?
And in the rear, you have the parking lot. You know, it's about 137 by maybe roughly 100, like 100 by—yeah, 100 by 137 back there as asphalt and parking.
So that parking in the back is used for the parking for the bowling alley?
Correct.
And it's adjacent to residential properties?
Correct.
Okay. And the current screening there? Do you have an aerial? Okay. And what is proposed?
So what's proposed is a 20-foot buffer in the rear.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
Okay, hold on.
Hang on, hang on.
Go through this.
That's the back parking lot? So there's a fence between the parking lot and the houses? Okay. All right. So what is proposed?
So proposed within that 20-foot buffer in the rear, we have some green giant arborvitae, emerald-green arborvitae, and then you have a mixture of other trees. There's some cedar—
So there's two rows—I'm sorry, two rows of trees?
I'm sorry, yes. Yes, there's two rows that would ultimately be 20 feet in width. So that is going along the northerly property line, and then also the westerly line, and it makes the—you know, the inverted L shape.
All the way around?
Mm-hmm. Goes all the way around. And then we also have landscaping along the street, along Long Island Avenue. It's a mixture of grass, some shrubs, some perennials, and then some street trees as well. And then there's a line—I believe there's 50 arborvitae that would be installed along Irving Avenue.
Okay. All right. Good. No, thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, would you be able to share with us the hours of operation?
So if it was public storage, or in general, these storage facilities, they usually open early in the morning, usually 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM in the morning, and they close at 9:00 PM.
Is that seven days a week?
Seven days a week, yes.
Okay.
They close earlier than, let's say, the would-be bowling alley would be.
Also additionally, will you and your clients be doing anything to curb idling? Idling of vehicles, possibly?
So one of the biggest things that I think we would be doing to clean up this site and curb idling and hanging out is eliminating that rear parking lot. It's not well-lit back there, and it is behind a building. So what tends to happen behind buildings, particularly at night, is you have people that come and they hang out, whether—you know, whatever they might be doing back there. I'm told they find, you know, broken bottles, garbage, things like that. So now they wouldn't have the opportunity to idle in the back. I don't think they would be idling in the front either, but I'm sure they'd have some sort of security and cameras and things like that.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is on the side that is along Irving. I noticed that there are exterior garage doors for storage.
Yes.
Was it discussed with the planning department or with your client regarding somehow blocking off that side and the curb cut to Irving so that only people who have some type of passcode or something get into that? I'm just concerned with the flow of traffic and possible idling along the side and things like that. And I know other storage facilities do have those restricted areas.
So you mean like a gate, like a security gate? Well, I think what's happening also with the curb cut—and I could have Scott address it—is our truck access for sanitation truck, to be able to access the refuse enclosure, as well as to be able to allow fire trucks in. I don't know that—you could put a crash gate over there, so to speak, because obviously you want the sanitation trucks to be able to access the refuse. If you want me to have Scott come back up and kind of talk about that? Sure.
Sir, please proceed.
So as far as the—you're asking more of a gate to block off that drive aisle heading—
Yeah, so I would like a restricted area on the side of the building that blocks from the front, and then also that blocks off that curb cut along Irving.
Okay. So Nicole was correct. To get to the refuse enclosure and have the waste management company come and take the garbage away, the truck turn—and Matt, if there is a diagram on—I think—a couple sheet, one sheet before the last. I think it's sheet six. I'm sorry.
I'll pull it up.
Keep going back. There it is. On the upper left-hand side there?
Yep.
So you can see the truck would access and have to use that curb cut through there for accessing that refuse enclosure and then leaving the site. So if that is—if the gate is what the planning department, planning board wants to put in there, we can discuss that with our client. We can—
We could revisit it and see if it's feasible. Yeah.
Is it feasible? Yes, of course. Julianne?
Just for the record, C and R, number 10, references no idling of engines at any time. But with reference to the refuse, the sanitation truck, it looks like that's having to do a three-point turn rather than a straight drive-through. Is that correct?
That is a very—what you're seeing is a very standard movement for any sanitation truck. If you know the types of trucks that they use nowadays, the forks are stored kind of in an up position along the front where the driver is. So when they pull up to a refuse enclosure, they put the forks down, they drive in, lift it above the driver's head into the back, and it dumps into the back of the truck, puts it back down. Then every sanitation truck has to back out, so he would just be backing straight up, and in this case, just making a slight turn as he does back up to then turn right and head out of the site.
He's exiting out front?
He's exiting out the side onto Irving Avenue there, and then heading out onto Long Island Avenue again. Comes in the front, drives straight up. Mm-hmm.
Harry, speak into the microphone.
So he comes in the front and goes up the lane on the east side to be head-on to the dumpster.
Correct.
And then he can pull out. So he's not backing in any place except to pull away from the dumpster—
Correct.
—to make the turn.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you very much. This is our opportunity to hear from you. Go ahead.
Could Dennis Ryan come up?
Mr. Ryan? Sir, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. Hi, Mr. Chairman. I'm aboard, and everybody else and staff, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Dennis Ryan. My name is Dennis Ryan, 98 Adam Street, Deer Park, New York.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, there's a lot of faces that I don't know up here, and I tend to know more. It's good to see you again, and thank you for what you've done for Long Island.
Thank you.
Does any of you live in the town of the hamlet of Deer Park? No? Okay, so let me tell you a little bit about her. My hamlet has got more fast food and gas stations than probably any town on Long Island, okay? What my hamlet doesn't have are places where we can go, where we can hang out, okay? We've been going there for decades. It has served the community for decades as a place that we can have fun, we can meet our neighbors, we can bowl. What else this community has done, and what that bowling alley has done for my community, is it's taken care of my children with disabilities in a big way, okay? They're there all the time, and I don't think it's my—just my Deer Park kids, right? I think my North Bab kids go there with disabilities. They serve this community. We want to put in a storage facility, the fourth one in Deer Park. Really? There's no common sense to this. There is a storage facility five-tenths of a mile west of where they are proposing to put this. Do you really think we need another one? I do not think we need another one. I would ask Scott and Nicole, bring it to your community. My community does not need another one. In fact, we have worked over the last couple of years with legislator Donnelly. In fact, we have worked over the last couple of years with legislator Donnelly to try to revamp that section from the bowling alley down to Deer Park Avenue, so you're going west, to make it more of a place where people from Deer Park and other visitors can go, adding restaurants, things to that effect. Somewhere we can go because quite frankly, Deer Park, we don't have that. Outside of the town parks that close to dusk, there's nothing. Okay? We have a lovely hamlet. We have wonderful people. We've got good kids. They need places to go. They need ways to get off the street. This bowling alley serves that purpose, period. I think the other thing that tends to bother me a lot is that if I remember correctly, back in 2021, LAG brought the town of Babylon to suit. Right? Our assessor was sued, our assessment department was sued. Not exactly sure what the outcome was of that. But here they are again. It doesn't make sense to me. We have what we need as far as storage is concerned. What we don't have are places for our people to go hang out. All right? And we need that. I also would like to... You know what? I'm going to leave that part alone. But one of the other things that we've been working with legislator Donnelly on, and we find this to be a big problem in my hamlet, our kids need places to live. All right? The homes are starting to get very expensive. It's getting very hard for them to afford them. And we don't have places that they can rent or apartments they can rent or things that they can go to to stay in Deer Park where they want to, where we want them to go, where we want them to be. So I'm asking you to start this process of denying this. Send this crowd packing. Ask them to go pick another community and we need to do the right thing for my hamlet at Deer Park. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
To your point about affordability, how long have you lived in Deer Park?
Thirty-seven years now.
Thirty-seven years.
Yeah.
Did you ever think that house would be this much, worth this much?
No, sir. Not at all.
Not in every community.
No, it's very true. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Would Joseph Pravetti please come up?
Mr. Pravetti, come on up. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Joseph Pravetti, 33 Eastwood Avenue in Deer Park, New York 1179.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please proceed.
Mr. Halpin, members of the planning board. I strongly oppose to the requested zoning change at the end of my street at 849 Long Island Avenue, Deer Park, from C residence and E business to G industry. This shift would have a deeply negative impact on the quality of life, character, and safety in our neighborhood as well as other towns within Babylons for these reasons. First, residential displacement. Our community includes long-term residents who value the mixed use, character of the street. Rezoning to industrial use for a storage facility threatens to push families out and replace homes with heavy-duty facilities that don't belong near residential areas. Second, environmental health risks. G-industry zoning allows for operations that could release pollutants, generate excessive noise, and create hazardous conditions. These risks are incompatible with community where children walk to school and families live close to the street. Third, traffic and safety concerns. Industrial operations bring heavy vehicle traffic, including trucks and machinery. This could strain local infrastructure, create congestion, and increase the danger for pedestrians, especially the elderly and children. Fourth, loss of neighborhood character. The current blend of small business and residences contributes to a vibrant, walkable neighborhood. Industrial zoning would erase that character and bring in development that feels disconnected from our community and its values. And last, history has shown that when communities stand together, they can succeed in preserving their identity. In Patchogue, local residents rallied in 2012 to prevent the conversion of a family park into an industrial parking facility. The town board ultimately voted in favor of the residents, emphasizing the importance of community, well-being, and commercial interests... Over commercial interest, I'm sorry. Similarly, in Red Hook, Brooklyn, a proposed warehouse expansion near residential zones was halted in 2020 after overwhelming public opposition emphasized quality of life and the loss of green space. We believe the town of Babylon, Deer Park, can and should follow these examples instead of rezoning to G industry. Moreover, the economic closure of a cherished community landmark, the Deer Park Bowling Alley, this would significantly impact our local fabric. This facility is not only a recreational hub for surrounding school districts, which also provides an affordable program for private as well as the town of Babylon's special needs children. It also is a source of employment for approximately 15 local residents, bolstering both federal and state income tax revenues. It brings vitality to the area by offering a sense of purpose and generating consistent foot traffic that sustains nearby businesses as well as a pro shop, restaurant, and arcade business within it. Replacing it with a storage facility, which would only employ approximately three individuals, represent an 80% reduction in jobs for the area, raising the unemployment rate by 12 people. In addition, the steep decline in customer activity would place neighboring businesses at an economic disadvantage, stripping the community of both livelihood and energy, leading to further deterioration of our neighborhood. For these reasons, I respectfully urge the town of Babylon Planning Board to reject the proposed request and uphold the longstanding zoning designation established decades ago. It is critical that we prioritize responsible planning as our community deserves thoughtful planning, planning that protects the integrity of our neighborhoods, safeguards our community, safety, preserves our local character, and supports our property values. Above all, we must champion the long-term economic health and livability of our area by serving the needs of our residents. Preserving our current zoning is not simply a matter of regulation. It's a commitment to the identity, safety, and economic well-being of Deer Park and as its residents, rather than advancing the narrow-minded interests of private equity and industrial expansion. Thank you, Mr. Halpin. And the members of the town planning board for your time, attention to this important matter.
Thank you, Mr. Pravetti. We appreciate it.
David J. Sinkada, please come up.
Sir, again, please state your name and address for the record.
David Johnson Kada, 134 Chertabean Lane, North Babylon.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please proceed.
As a member of Deer Park since 1970, my grandmother was on the board that founded the first community center in Deer Park. Town of Babylon decided it was too expensive to keep it on Deer Park Avenue and moved it to Homero Avenue School. You know what happened to attendance there? It went down. You know what happened to the kids on the street? They became a problem. They're riding their bikes down the middle of the street, no respect for nobody, no mind for nothing. Lou Seda, the owner of Strike 10 Lanes, pays his debt, heavy debt to this society. Every summer, any parent can sign their kids up to bowl two games every day for free. That's money out of his pocket. The programs that he runs there or that he advances and helps with the help of coaches from other schools, North Babylon, Deer Park, and Brentwood, all three schools bowl their programs there. They don't have another house to go to if you close this house on them. That's it. Those schools lose their programs. You want to hang that on your hat? Go ahead. Personally, the ones I care about the most out of them aren't even in the town of Babylon. They're the kids from Brentwood. Why? Because nobody gives a damn about them. I've been to their matches. I went to their awards dinner when the parents didn't show up. They have a safe haven. They know they can come talk to Mr. Seda, to Mike Di Ambrosio in the pro shop, to myself, to Dawn. They have storage in the back where they can keep their bowling equipment cost-free. They get donations of bowling equipment. And let's not forget about fundraisers. That bowling alley has provided more fundraisers for church, schools, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. Is some public storage going to do that for us? Twenty-six parking spots, I think you said, Miss? Is that correct?
Sir, sir.
I'm sorry. Just you? Yes, sir. I apologize. I believe they said 26 parking spots. Four were going to be shrubs until needed. That's not enough parking spots for all that that they're looking to do inside. It meets the minimum. How about going above and beyond? I think she said two handicap spots. I'm handicapped. I have a lifetime handicap membership. I just have to renew it every four years. How many people are going to go there that are handicapped and can't park in the front and have to park somewhere else? It's up to the board to realize this is the biggest mistake they could ever do to the community of Deer Park. At that time, thank you very much for your time tonight. God bless.
Thank you very much.
John Azara?
Mr. Azara. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes. My name is John Azara. I live at 45 Eastwood Avenue for 60 years.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
So help me God.
Please proceed.
Chairman, board members, I have lived at 45 Eastwood Avenue for over 60 years. My grandparents have lived on Eastwood Avenue since the 40s. Matter of fact, my father, along with his brothers and his father, built the house on 60 Eastwood Avenue. I've seen a lot of change come and go. We stand here today together tonight as one community, not only one person. And we are talking about a building that is a landmark of Deer Park. We're not talking about a delicatessen or a shoe store. We're talking about a landmark that has served the Deer Park community for all these years. As you already heard, there are children... If you have a child and you want to throw a birthday party and you want it to be relatively inexpensive, this is an asset. There's so many birthdays that have been thrown there. I'd like to talk about, maybe you can clear this up for me. When I look at the records, tax records for the lot, the property, it comes back to me as 44,200 feet. Is that correct?
Let me ask our planning director again.
That's what it shows on the tax, property taxes.
We will confirm.
Okay. Let's assume, let's assume it's correct.
I presume it's correct.
So 44,200.
Right.
I'd like you to refer to the Charter and the laws, I don't know if you have the ability to bring that up on the screen, your code and so forth.
You don't, so please proceed.
Okay. All right, very good. No problem. Section E, paragraph 3A. It addresses, it addresses storage facilities. Definition. Storage facilities shall be defined as a building divided into two or more individual spaces which will be rented to one or more tenants for the storage materials and equipment of the tenants. This shall include, but not be limited, to buildings known as mini storages, public storages, and alike. This shall not apply to the storage spaces of shopping centers, apartment houses, and similar buildings when such spaces are used to store materials. Now, I mentioned a few moments ago the 44,200 lot. An acre is equal to 43,560 square feet. That's a difference of 640 square feet. That comes to approximately 25 by 25 feet, the average of somebody's living room. So according to my figures, and you're going to check to make sure that this is correct, which I got from the town... It barely would make the allowance of the one-acre lot. So, um, that, you know, that just doesn't seem, seem right. To stop the zoning and demolition of our beloved alley, you have heard testimony from many on the bowling alley is such a big part of our community, both for adults, seniors, and children. According to my research, the gentleman that runs the bowling alley, his name was mentioned, Lucida, when I inquired, he has many years left on his lease and he really doesn't want to leave. That came to me from both manager and other people that spoken to him, although I have not spoken to him direct. So he's committed. He's committed to continue serving this community in the way he has. And to demolish it for a storage facility, which is, as the other gentleman said, right down the block, a short distance, is a brand-new one by Cube Smart. That's the name of that, that particular one. It is unfathomable to me. The whole thing is just unfathomable to me. So in closing, I ask you, no, I implore you, deny this request to rezone. Keep our bowling alley. Do the right thing for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And just so you know, whether it's you or others who raise, you know, technical issues like that or for that matter, any issue, all of those get carefully examined by our staff and by the board members. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you very much.
Kristin Calhoun?
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Kristin Calhoun. I live at 231 Adam Street in Deer Park.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
So help me God.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I have been a lifelong resident of Deer Park and went to the bowling alley myself as a child. So it is a very emotional thing to stand up here and speak to you, as you might imagine. But my real concern is for this community. We need that bowling alley. And if it's not the bowling alley, it's not, it's not specifically the bowling alley. It's the sense of community that comes from the bowling alley. We don't need another storage facility. We have a storage facility down the block, as people have mentioned, and we have another storage facility two blocks over. That's not what we need. Changing the zoning to industry is defeating the purpose of our community. We are working very hard to keep our community and to keep our community strong and to keep our families in Deer Park. We love our community and changing the zoning will defeat the purpose of our community. All the new building that has been done in Deer Park recently has been industrial. We have the most unsightly, god-awful warehouse that I still don't... We have the most unsightly, god-awful warehouse that I still don't understand how it was approved, and that is just making, driving people away from our community. Who wants to look out their front door and see what currently looks like a prison? So who wants to look out their front door and see a storage facility? No one. This is a mixed-use neighborhood. It should stay that way, and the zoning should not be changed. We were promised that Deer Park, that Long Island Avenue would be revitalized and that we would have a downtown, something where we could go with our families. That has not come to fruition. And now you're looking at just adding a storage facility which provides no service and no sense of community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Greg Grabowski?
Mr. Grabowski, when you get there, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Greg Grabowski, 21 Eastwood Avenue, Deer Park, New York, 1179.
Go ahead. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I swear to tell the truth.
Okay, please.
So I'm a 21-year-old retired correctional officer from New York City. I retired at Deer Park, from Nassau County, but living here approximately 15 years almost. Can you pull up the map of the bowling alley, please, sir? So if you look, can you zoom into the bowling alley, please? If you look into the map, so you got that empty back lot right there for parking, that's my backyard. That is my immediate backyard.
Is that yours with the pool?
Uh, no.
Okay. Who is, yes, oh, you're up.
The one right where the arrow is right now.
Okay, gotcha.
That's my house.
All right, got it. Okay, thank you.
Now, I know moving to, you know, behind the bowling alley, there'll be, you know, things to deal with, people hanging out, cars doing donuts in the middle of the night, you know, so on and so off. I didn't expect to have a storage facility moving. When I go in my backyard and sit in my hot tub, I would like to see, you know, the sky, you know, what Deer Park has to offer, not a big, giant building. I don't care how many trees you put, they're still gonna be a building. Deer Park has many storage facilities, like people have said before, and I don't know if they make money or not. I do have a storage facility that I am renting from on Deer Park Avenue, and it's changed owners three times. So with this one company wants to go in there and do, it's a great promise, but when they sell to another company, and another company, another company, what's it gonna turn into? I have so many questions on how it's gonna affect me, my house, my family, my neighbors, how long the construction's gonna be, the noise levels, the security, is it gonna be 24-hour security? Like I said, it would be fencing, like you asked, that only customers can get in and out of. I know the storage facility on Deer Park Avenue have a problem with people moving into the storage facilities and using them as, like, homes. A lot of times, these storage facilities, when people move out, a lot of times, they go to the storage facility, they take what they want to take, and they dump the rest of their stuff in the parking lot, and it attracts rats and other vermin, like raccoons and possums, all that kind of stuff. So I'm just worried, though, again, Long Island Avenue was Long Island Avenue. On the other side of Long Island Avenue is all industrial. The bowling alley is commercial. I'm gonna say to you guys, please vote to keep it commercial. If the owner wants to, owner of the property wants to sell it, make it something else, sell to somebody else, they want to make it commercial, it is what it is. But to switch it to industrial and to make my backyard basically a giant concrete wall, I would strongly ask that you guys turn it down. That's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski.
Alicia Bazzi?
Yeah, before you address the board, I just want to state that we have received the petition. That will be part of the record and, of course, and this petition as well. Yes. Yeah, no. Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, I was aware that. No, no, it's fine, but thank you. I just wanted to let you know that we have it. It'll be part of the official record and carefully scrutinized. Please, please go forward.
Hi, my name's Alicia Bazzi, 59 Irving Avenue, Deer Park, New York. I swear to tell the truth.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do, sir.
Please proceed.
I'm a lifetime resident of Deer Park. I live on Irving Avenue for the past 30 years. I'm here to express my stronger position to propose the zoning change from the property of 849 Long Island Avenue, from the current zoning, E-business residential and C-residential and D-industrial. This proposed change poses a serious threat to the safety and well-being and quality of our life in our neighborhood. My concerns, which are shared by many fellow residents, include the compromising of the residence character of the neighborhood. It will significantly increase the congestion, already congested traffic, takes me forever to get off my block, placing a strain on the overburned infrastructure. It threatens the property value and could negatively impact our public safety. It undermines the delicate balance between residential and commercial development that is essential to Deer Park's livability. A shift toward industrial zoning as primarily residential area is inconsistent with the responsible urban planning and undermines the long-term sustainability. As Nicole mentioned, there is industrial area right across the street. There's a train station, you got strip stores, that's where we get our bagels, that's where we get our pizza, that's where we get our nails done, our hair done. Down the block, you get your car fixed. It's industrial. There's no reason to move this west. We have enough industrial. Don't move it west, please. I respectfully urge the Babylon Town Board to reject this zoning change, preserve the current zoning designation, and by doing so, you will help maintain the character and quality of the life Deer Park residents have worked very hard to build, show that the voices and the priority of the existing community members are being heard and respected, prevent the additional environmental safety and infrastructure burdens that industrial developments would bring to our area. In closing, I ask each of you to sincerely reflect on this question. How would you feel if an industrial zone were to move just six houses away from where you live? I'm six houses, some of these people are closer. I didn't get the 200-feet letter because I'm 800 feet away. I didn't see the sign, or a neighbor didn't come over to say, "This is what's happening." I wouldn't know. A lot of neighbors had no idea this was even happening, and we got all those signatures in 1,700 signatures in 10 days. Please put yourselves in our shoes and stand with the residents of Deer Park. Thank you for your time, attention, and thoughtful consideration for our community's concerns.
Thank you very much.
Could Tom Lawless, please come up?
Mr. Lawless, please state your name and address for the record.
Tom Lawless, 33 Irving Avenue, Deer Park.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please proceed.
Good evening. Thank you for having this event for us. I live three.
This is a public here.
Public here.
Not a event. I want to make sure. No, this is not a party. This is a public here.
In 1961, my mother purchased a house three houses away from this building. She lived there till 1989, and in '93, I bought the house. So I lived in a house for 63 years. I don't know if anybody's lived there longer than I have. There are older people that live on my block that have been there for 60 years as well, right behind the place where they want to put the garbage disposal. Artie Clackett, 84-year-old man, lives there. I can't imagine the garbage truck pulling up and slamming the doors while this man's trying to sleep at whatever time this man comes. Next to him is the Westerlands. The Westerlands been there since I've been a kid. They've been there for at least 55 years. Another house down is Teresa Ali, been there for 50 years. One house down from there, the Negliers, been there for 63 years. So we have history on this block. You know, what they're trying to do is to encroach on a residential area. I understand it's commercial, it's not industrial. All the industrial stuff is on the east side of Carl's Path. All of those buildings are owned by one company. He owns everything down there, and now he's trying to encroach on our residential neighborhood. I raised my children on that block. My kids rode their bicycles on that block. I played stickball in that parking lot when I was eight years old. I adamantly, I don't want this in at all. It's gonna change the block. The bowling alley has been there forever. We've all gone there for parties. We all have gone there with our children and bowled. I just think it's a shame that they're trying to push everything from the east side of Carl's Path, where we know it's industrial, and then they're trying to infringe onto our residential neighborhood just for profit. These people are multi-multi-multi-millionaires. All it is is for profit. If they don't want the property, sell it.
Okay.
I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
John McCormick?
Sorry? Oh, okay. I'm being reminded to speak into the mic, so you should, too.
Okay, okay. My name is Sean McCormick. I live at One Sandy Court in Deer Park, New York. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Please proceed.
All right. So I've been a lifelong resident of Deer Park. In my youth, I would visit the bowling alley a lot, and I was often in a league with my friend who was handicapped. It was one of the only places that he felt comfortable around other youth. He would go to Jamesy Allen and didn't really get to be around the rest of the kids in the neighborhood, but when we would go bowling, he always felt accepted and part of the community. Everyone owes him. He was always glad to have him there. Losing the bowling alley would get rid of that for him and all the other children like him that feel accepted there at this time. And also, just walking past the bowling alley, I always see people outside, people having fun, people going there to just hang out and be with the community. A self-storage facility, people are just gonna be going in and out. Mostly people that don't even live in the neighborhood are gonna be using it. People are gonna come from miles away, towns over, just to use our area to store their garbage, their refuse, that they don't want anymore. While we want that in the area, we want to use it for our community. We want it to continue being something that we can go to, to have fun, because what else do we have in this town besides the bowling alley? We have maybe a mini golf park, but that's only good during the spring and summer. The rest of the year, there's absolutely nothing to do in this town. And then the other thing is, with all the recent construction in the last few years, there's been an awful lot of light pollution, and if you look at the sky at night, you can barely see anything. This self-storage facility, I'm sure, is going to be well-lit, bright, and just add to that, and it's gonna be nothing. You're gonna look up the sky, and it's just gonna be blank, and you're not gonna be able to see a thing. So in that sense, we don't need self-storage. We need, if anything, maybe the bowling alley could be revitalized. Money could be put into it to make it a better location. Maybe someone wants to buy the facility to just make the area better, maybe add to the bowling alley. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Patricia Patrillo?
I'm sorry, sir. We have people who have signed up, so we have to go through this list.
All right, Your Honor, but something's very important, especially for my Down Syndrome daughter, Noel.
I understand, and we do want you to speak, but you have to fill out one of these cards. Have you filled one out?
No, but if somebody comes, fill one out, that'd be great.
Okay.
Can Patricia Patrillo come up?
Sir, could you, the officer will help you with that.
Hi, my name is.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Patricia Patrillo, 285 West 10th Street, Deer Park.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Nothing but.
Okay, let's let him go by, so we can pay attention.
I thank you for allowing me to speak. I stand before you.
Hold that down.
Sorry, I'm short.
We want to make sure all of this is recorded properly.
I stand before you as a mom of two former athletes from Deer Park High School. One was finished fourth in the state from, on the bowling team. My children would not have gotten the opportunity to attend college with the scholarships if they were not in the scholarship leagues, if they did not have the coaching. They, I'm a mom who works in the city. My children were safe for 10 years without me having to worry where they were. They were adults. They learned skills of sportsmanship. Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Oh, you're doing fine.
My son, Anthony, wanted to be here tonight. He is the manager of the bowling alley, and he unfortunately is working. But he wanted me to come and relay all the joy and the opportunities. Both of my children have met their girlfriends there. One worked.
I thought they were bowling.
Well, they do bowl. Well, now they're.
I'm sorry.
Now they're both graduated.
I just wanted to let you know, I do pay attention to everything people say.
But both my son's girlfriends have scholarship opportunities. We would not have had any of that opportunity if we did not have the bowling alley. So I implore you, there are children that are coming up behind them. My son's girlfriend just recently graduated. There were young women on those teams that are going to universities because they had the opportunity to go to tournaments, to have coaches. Lou absolutely, 100% takes care of our kids. He stands with all of the children, seniors. He guides them. He brings people in to help them. So I'm asking, please, for our sports, we don't have the money. Our schools don't have the money for our sports. The bowling team is a minimal expense, but we didn't have to pay for anything. My kids bowled for 10 years, through middle school, through high school, and then went on to win states. So there is opportunities for our children to come, hang out, meet girls, go out to dinner. My son is an unemployed college student, but he can take his girlfriend to Domino's and across to the Chinese food place and to 7-Eleven.
We've all been there once.
And be in a safe environment that our mom is okay with them being out. So I ask you to please, we don't need another building. What we need is an opportunity for our children to continue their education and apply themselves to, give them an opportunity for college, just to come in and take a look at them, because we can't afford them.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Vince Di Benedetto?
Hold on, get right up there, speak. Pull that microphone close.
Hey, do your honor, and people of the board, my name is Vincent J. Di Benedetto. My daughter is Noel Di Benedetto, and she's Down Syndrome.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth?
I swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth. Help me God.
Please proceed, sir.
So my daughter is Down Syndrome, and she belongs to the people with this, with handicap services, and she looks forward to going bowling all the time. And these children, who are all handicapped, who go there, they enjoy, that's their outing. They go there to enjoy bowling and have a good time with their friends and everything. We do not need another storage in Deer Park. We need that bowling alley for all the kids, all the handicapped people that go there and go bowling, to enjoy themselves with a family life. Like my daughter, she says, "Dad, they're gonna take them, they're gonna take that bowling alley away from us? We have nowhere else to go and to have a good time."
Understood.
So we don't, they don't need another storage place. They got one down there on Deer Park Avenue already. I belong to the Knights of Columbus on Deer Park Avenue, the Lady of the Rosaries. I'm there on my third degree. And these kids need something. They don't need another place not to go to. They go to the VFW Hall that do dancing, but they enjoy their bowling. My daughter just got a brand-new bowling ball, and she enjoys bowling. The guy there in the pro shop, he helps her out, he gives her something, and he enjoys these people. And the kids enjoy going to the bowling alley. We do not need a storage place there. Please don't take the bowling alley away from these kids, unfortunate kids.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Andrew Rena? Andrew Rena, please come up.
Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Andrew Rena, 142 Overton Street in Deer Park.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please proceed.
So I'm a lifelong resident of Deer Park. I've lived there for 50 years. My family's been there since 1950s. We have four generations of my family that are Deer Park residents. We've been there forever. I love that bowling alley. I've brought my kids there. I played games with my father there, my uncles. I had great memories there as a kid. And it's one of the few places that families can go in our town. It's difficult enough with young kids in the community, you know, out and about, without having a safe place for them to go. Now, while I'd love to see the bowling alley stay, that's not the reason why I'm here. I'm here to tell you that I oppose the change in the zoning. Because, you know, it's not, if the business isn't viable, that's a business decision for the business owner to make. If the property owner feels that they don't want to keep their property any longer, that's a, you know, the property owner's decision. But what I oppose is the change in the zoning, because I do not want to see something like a storage unit, a self-storage, end up in our neighborhood abutting residential homes. There are, correct me if I'm wrong, five other storage units, self-storage in Deer Park. One on Grand Boulevard, one on Comac Road, one on Acorn, one on Bay Shore Road, and then one on the same road of Long Island Avenue. There's already five in our neighborhood. If this company wants to come in and put there, they've done their market analysis, they want to put in a self-storage unit, put it in an appropriate location. There's plenty of industrial parks in Deer Park, plenty of areas that are already zoned for industrial, where they can put their business. I'm not saying don't put your business here. I'm saying putting it in an appropriate area. Leave this area zoned appropriately. So if the landlord does decide he wants to sell, he can sell it to somebody that's gonna put a business in that place that meets its current zoning and meets the needs of the neighborhood and the condition of the neighborhood. It shouldn't be some giant self-storage location. And if we do allow this zoning to, zoning change to go through and be changed to industrial, what happens if the sale falls through? What happens if, you know, the business folds after a few years? Right? It's great to say, you know, they've done their market analysis, they've done their business analysis, and all the best plans sometime lay to waste where, you know, you've done your research and the business folds, and then what moves in there next? It's already now zoned for industrial, and it's also demolished the site that's already been there. So, you know, what do we end up with, another, possibly another self-storage unit? Do we end up with a warehouse? Do we end up with a manufacturing facility in that same location? Some of which, I know they spoke about, you know, the traffic situation is not as bad with a storage unit, which I don't really buy, but, you know, if their business folds and something else moves in there, that could certainly turn into something that increases the traffic in an area that's already poorly, has a poor traffic and infrastructure plan as it is. Regarding this self-storage, they're typically not well-staffed. People come and go as they please. It's, who's to say that your car's not gonna sit there and idle, you know, for hours while you're loading stuff up? Who's to say that, you know, that there's adequate security to keep people from breaking in? And what could be stored in a storage facility where you're able to put your own stuff in there, you're abutting right next to homes there, and you don't know what somebody's gonna store in there? Who's gonna store their fireworks in there, some chemicals, something that's not appropriate to be next to a home? And what happens to the property values of these folks who live on that block? I'm fortunate enough to live far enough away where it's not as big of a concern for me. It is a concern, but what about the folks that live immediately next to this? A home is your largest investment, the largest investment most of us will ever make, and you place some blight like this next to somebody's house, and you watch their property values, the people right immediately around it, drop. Is it fair to negatively impact their life savings and what's their retirement and their future for some self-storage unit? It just doesn't make sense to me. While you talked about, we heard people talking about that there's other industrial zoned items on that road. Yes, there are. They're also a blight, but they back the railroad. They're not backing someone's home. The backyard of some of these industrially zoned items on Long Island Avenue backed the railroad, not somebody's backyard. So I really, I implore you to please do not change the zoning, protect the folks who live in here and put their life savings into this, into their homes, and put their blood, sweat, and tears into this town. I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much, Patricia. Before we get to the next speaker, I just want to repeat something that I said at the beginning of the hearing. Again, if the town, the key word there is "if the town," if the town is going to consider a zoning change, there will be a separate public hearing with the town board. We're appointed by the town board to look at the site plan and also the special use permit, but that would be a separate hearing. So it's fine that you've made those points for the record, because they all become part of the record that the town board will review, but they will have a separate hearing if the town decides to take that up, okay? Hold on, hold on, hold on, please. We really have to get back to the speakers.
I just want to know how are we gonna be informed?
You will be informed the same way you've been informed for this. Alright, alright. Hold on. We have all of your names and addresses and all of that and your emails. Anybody who's here who filled this out will also get a notice. Alright, thank you. Good question.
Amza Hassan?
Mr. Hassan, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Amza Hassan, and I'm an architect, trained as an architect, and I've also been living there around like 12 years.
Okay.
I live like three blocks away from it.
Okay, I see your address is 6 Stephen Court. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please proceed, sir.
Alright, so as an architect, what we do is like when we get a project, you go there and you observe the neighborhood and see like what people are doing with the neighborhood.
Right.
And what people do is like they go to the bowling alley, or they go to like the thing south of it, and they park their car, and they go to like each little store and, you know, shop. And he's talking about how like he's gonna lower the traffic, he's gonna lower the traffic to all the like businesses there. Those businesses are gonna lose from lowering the traffic.
Yeah, I really have to address the board.
I understand, but the thing is, it's like, they're presenting the place as if like it's like this dilapidated place where like there is a broken glass in the back. There's never broken glass there. I go there all the time. I walk from my house to 7-Eleven to get coffee like three times a day. It's never, it's not as bad as they're pointing it out, like as if like they're gonna like plant some trees and it's gonna be for us. It's not for us, because there's gonna be like a perimeter wall. So like the trees are gonna be there for the birds. We're gonna like pass by there. I'm not gonna be able to like go in there and enjoy the, sit under the tree or something like that. It's gonna be closed off. And the only, even the people that are gonna use the place are not gonna go there and enjoy the property. I just don't understand how like this area is being turned into like an industrial zone when down the block, there is like a thousand people are about to start working there at the new place, and they're gonna need restaurants to eat lunch. They're not gonna need to like go to like put their trash away at the self-storage. I just don't get it. I don't get it. And they're insulting our intelligence by like pretending like the neighborhood is broken and they're gonna fix it with this, with this few trees that they're gonna plant.
Alright, hold on.
I don't mind if they build something else there that is gonna like serve a similar purpose.
Understood.
And I think like a lot of people agree with it, even though they're in love with the bowling alley, we wouldn't mind if you built something there that we could use.
Okay, well, we're not building anything. We're just reviewing an application.
Alright, well, I mean, some people pointed out earlier that they wanted to like make the area a little downtown, you know, so like I'm not sure like if you guys are like involved with that decision, but it's actually a really, really great idea for the town.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hassan. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Kristen Howe?
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Kristen Howe, 161 Comac Avenue, Deer Park, New York.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I have to ask you, what's with the t-shirt? It says, "Please leave a message."
It was just-
It was the only clean one.
It's a summer day.
By the way, this was the only clean shirt I had, so I figured I'd wear it, but go ahead.
So my son is on the unified bowling team for the past two years.
That's great.
These are the kids that are going to be affected if they lose this bowling alley. It's not only their team. It's North Babylon, it's Brentwood. These kids need this. The rezoning doesn't need to happen. We don't need another storage facility. These children, they do not have much, but this bowling alley is their safe haven. My son loves it. I am a lifelong resident of Deer Park. I am 40 years old. I've lived in this town my entire life. I have gone to the bowling alley, so has all my family, my friends, my children, but it most affects special needs children. They don't have much. Please do not take away this bowling alley from them. This is all they have. They don't like change. Where are they gonna go? There's nowhere else for them to go. And there's another team called Spare Parts. Those are the adults who have transitioned out of high school. My son also bowls on that team as well. Please, I implore this committee, please reject the rezoning. Don't take this away from our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Allen?
Mr. Allen? Can you please state your name and address for the record?
John Allen, 23, Summerfield Court, Deer Park, New York.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please proceed.
I got you all beat. My family's been in Deer Park since the 1930s, so we have 90 years of vested interest in Deer Park. I myself was a Deer Park mailman.
You were a mailman?
I was a mailman in Deer Park, yes.
How many miles a day did you walk? A lot.
How many?
You're in great shape.
So, you know, I'm not gonna go back and hash how many facilities we have. We know how many we have. What I'm gonna implore these people, that we know that they want a facility. I understand we have a monster eyesore going up behind the Deer Park post office with Amazon, and they may have walked out of the project. Have we offered them another opportunity to build somewhere else?
Can we give them the gentleman over here? Don't write on that. They've spent a lot of money. Hold on, hold on. We've got a clipboard for you. Yes, it's all the taxpayers' money to fix it all up. Okay.
So what I'm saying, I understand that we built a project for Amazon behind the Deer Park post office. Amazon, from what I understand, may have walked out of that project. Trucks have been going in and out of there for years. Is there a possibility these people could be offered another site? As I was coming here tonight, a friend of mine is still involved in the bowling community, and he said to me the same thing that these people have said. Many children will be affected by this. As a matter of fact, I recently worked at a golf course that served the underprivileged children of Brentwood, and I know what these programs mean to them and how they had something to look forward to. So yes, this would definitely impact these children immensely. How are you gonna look them in the face and say, "We sold your souls to a storage facility"? And being in Deer Park as long as I have, many of us here have a sentimental attachment to Deer Park Bowl, not Strike Lane's, Deer Park Bowl, which has been there for over 50 years. How many people are going to have a sentimental attachment to a storage facility in maybe two years? I guarantee you, zero. Now, I've been in touch with Vic Schaefer quite a bit over the revitalization of Deer Park and doing things to better the community. This does nothing to better the community of Deer Park, especially from someone who has such a long and storied history with Deer Park itself. I am a veteran. I'm a 42-year civil servant. I want to preserve Americana. I want it back. And what we're doing now is giving more and more of it away to the corporate greed day by day. But what I'm gonna do now is, I want to challenge this community, I mean this committee, and the town board, to tell these people, no, we have a dire responsibility to our community and these children, and to form a community, and if we are a community, let's band together to find a way to save Deer Park Bowl with this committee and with the town of Babylon through fundraisers. That is a vital part of Deer Park and has been for as long as many of us have been on this planet. I challenge you, Mr. Halpin, your committee and the town. I know Vic Schaefer personally. You tell me where I gotta be, and I will be there to help you do it. Let's work together to save Deer Park Bowl.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Naomi Roden?
Hello, welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Naomi Roden.
Naomi, pull back closer, please, so you can speak up.
My name is Naomi Roden. I live in 1560 Lincoln Boulevard, Bay Shore.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear to tell the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Please go. Please go for it.
My name is Naomi Roden, and I'm a recent graduate of Brentwood High School. I started bowling at my freshman year of high school. It was an amazing experience with so many laughs and friendships. I am here fighting for my team and community. I hope to have future students to keep this place in my neighborhood community. This is my home away from home. This is where my friend and I can hang out and enjoy without being home all the time. I know many teachers and adults complain we were always on our phones. If the bowling alley closes, then I know many students from Deer Park, North Babylon, and Babylon, and Brentwood community, they won't have places to go this alley. It's the first alley I ever felt welcome in this bowling alley. It has so much opportunities for people. My cousin has autism. This is the first place my cousin had ever felt comfortable to come and bowl without someone judging them or people giving him a weird stare. This bowling alley is not just a regular bowling alley. It's a bowling alley that everyone is welcome at, this bowling alley. And I also can come bowl with just $20, and I can enjoy a night out with my friends and family, and even have enough to get an Arizona and fries at Strike 10 Lanes. Thank you for your time.
Maldrin Hernandez?
Could you repeat that?
Maldrin Hernandez?
Hello, please state your name and address for the record.
Maldrin Hernandez, 33 South 5th Avenue, Brentwood, New York.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
Hello, my name is Maldrin Hernandez, and I am a recent high school graduate from Brentwood. My senior year, I became manager of the varsity bowling team at Brentwood High School. Although I had not been a part of the team my entire high school career, like most of my friends, this bowling alley is still a place I hold close to my heart. We had practices and games four days a week for the season, and during this time, I grew closer to the coaches, employees, and most importantly, my friends. We all created friendships that will last us a lifetime. This bowling alley became our home, a place we shared laughs, successes, and failures, and learned so much about ourselves together as a team and as a family. An example of successes could be two of my bestest friends, Twila and Talia, who will be bowling at the collegiate level this upcoming year, all thanks to the wonderful team, coaches, and especially the bowling alley in which they learned and developed all the skills that led them to this amazing achievement. It would be a shame if this place we all hold close to our hearts was taken away from us and all the opportunities future student athletes could have at this alley. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Vikin Kazhar?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Vikin Kazhar, 2433 West 6th Street, Deer Park.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
So to describe Deer Park a little more, as a previous speaker said, it's what I'd call like a very high throughput town. We have, you know, the most famous thing in Deer Park being used is Deer Park Avenue or Comac Road, I'd say. We have a lot of traffic coming in and out, and a lot of it is sort of stop-and-go traffic. It's, you know, restaurants and shops and coffees, things like that. What we don't have are reasons to sort of stay in Deer Park, to, somewhere to go, to stay, and not just to go through. So for example, growing up for us, going to Deer Park High School-
You have to slow down, so we get everything you're saying.
Yeah, that's my bad.
That's okay.
So for us, growing up, you know, we'd of course gained some independence, you know, in our teens, start to look for places where we can hang out- know, in our teens, start to look for places where we can hang out, have a good time with our friends as we start to grow up, but prior to getting old enough to, you know, go out and drive places. Uh, so for us, that was the bowling alley growing up. It's the only one, you know, we could think of. Uh, to us, it's not the Deer Park Bowling Alley, it's just the bowling alley. Um, so sort of like reflecting on that, once we did get, you know, old enough to sort of drive on our own and do things like that, there are many reasons for us to sort of leave Deer Park, right? Um, to do things like hang out and, you know, enjoy ourselves and have fun. Uh, so for example, like for me, I had my 14th and 16th birthday parties at um, at the Deer Park Bowling Alley. Coming from a family that, you know, had some financial difficulties growing up, it was very affordable. The owner's always been hospitable and making deals with us, especially my family, um, to have, you know, affordable um, bowling alley experiences. Um, it brings a lot of people together. I think the location being so close to residential houses makes it so that whatever building that is should be, you know, respectful to to its location. Um, to our friend who spoke before, um, they mentioned on the other side that something they'd like to change is that they'd like to make it more well-lit, um, that this is not, you know, a well-lit area. I think that's a point against what we'd like. I don't think, you know, my friend over here's backyard would want to be well-lit at night, um, you know, while he's sleeping, and the more, you know, retirees and elder people that we have there are sleeping at night. Um, I think, you know, starting to really think about other places we have in Deer Park to go and treat as a third space, somewhere that's not home or work or school, uh, we're grabbing at straws. There really isn't much left. Uh, it's it's a very prideful part of Deer Park. I think it's something we reference in like a big, you know, point of living in Deer Park. One of those things, um, you know, without that, I should say, it gets much more difficult to have a sense of community, a sense of a reason to stay in Deer Park when we leave our houses and not just drive elsewhere, um, to enjoy ourselves and to do things like other than working and buying coffee. Um, so from the perspective of recently growing up in my teens and my twenties in Deer Park, I think this would be, you know, a monumental loss of pride and sense of community for um, for our town. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Priscilla Zarate?
Please state your name and address.
Yes, Priscilla Zarate, 200 Overture Street in Deer Park, New York.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I swear. Thank you. So my name again is Priscilla Zarate, and I stand before you today not only as a resident of the Deer Park community, as a chairwoman of the Suffolk County Hispanic Advisory Board, and as a neighbor, parent, and a community advocate, and an educational leader who has seen firsthand the effects of of today's challenges on our children's and families. I want to speak to the heart of what makes Deer Park special, and I want to thank, to talk about what we risk losing if we allow Deer Park Bowling Alley, a long-lasting symbol of community connection and childhood memories, to be replaced by yet another storage facility. Let me be clear, storage units do not build community. They don't host youth leagues. They don't bring families together for birthday parties or school outings. They don't offer teenagers a safe place to laugh, to grow, and to just be kids. They don't provide jobs, joy, or the kind of shared experiences that defines our hometown. As an educator, I've witnessed the lasting social-emotional impact of the pandemic, the toll of the current political and social climate, and silent struggles that many of our children carry every day. Our students are our future and are hurting, and they need spaces where they can escape the heaviness, where they can breathe, laugh, and feel safe. Deer Park Bowling Alley is more than just a building. It is a therapeutic social-emotional learning space. It often, it, I'm sorry, it offers a distraction from the stresses of life and creates moments of joy and lightness that are vital for mental well-being. It is a place where families connect, where children find community, and where healing quietly happens through togetherness. To replace with a concrete metal and padlocks is more than a zoning change. It is a loss of values. It is a message that commercial expansion matters more than community resilience and more than childhood happiness, more than well-being of people who live here. We are not against development, but we are against the kind of development that sacrifices our soul of our, of the community. We need to invest in places that unite us, not isolate us, in places that uplift us, not just store our stuff. Uh, let's preserve the spirit of Deer Park. Let's stand together to keep bowling out, the bowling alley, not just as a building, but as a sanctuary for joy, healing, and belonging. Our children need it. Our families deserve it, and our community is worth fighting for. I do want to end by saying that because our school districts have also been compromised with the cutting of federal funds, this leaves our school districts without opportunities that are offered, such as the bowling alley, to be able to fundraise for school districts and continue to provide opportunities for our children to be immersed in enrichment programs, summer programs, after-school programs, that keep our students learning and help them achieve, close the achievement gaps that sometimes exist for certain student populations, um, and keep them going so that they can really graduate. So thank you very much for the opportunity, and I hope that you do reject the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that is the last of our speakers. Uh, thank you all for coming. As I, as I mentioned before, uh, we have all of the copies of the petitions. We have all of the petitions that were submitted today. Uh, if they're, um, and and we will be reviewing all of that very carefully, including all of the issues that have been raised today as part of the record. And some part, yeah, Ms. Blanda, uh, could you come back up and address some of the things that have been brought up?
Sure, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So, I mean, very briefly, and if the board has questions, by all means.
Sure.
Um, just, there's two tax lots here. So just to the gentleman's question regarding the lot area for the property, it could be that the tax assessor, he was looking at one tax lot. The total lot area that's certified is 58,716 square feet. Um, I'm going to, we're going to take in, I mean, there was a lot that was said tonight, and I'm going to go over it with the property owner. Um, it's, there's no simple answer here as far as the future for this site, but I can say that we will certainly take into account, and we respect everything that was said tonight, and we're going to take a look at it and discuss it.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to ask for a motion from the board to close the hearing, and we will reserve decision. Uh, Juan, could you make that motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, motion to close and reserve decision.
Okay, second by Julianne. All in favor? I approve. This hearing is closed. The decision has been reserved in order for us to review the feedback we've received this evening and any open site issues. The record will remain open for written comments. To follow up on the status of the application or to submit additional written comments, you can contact the planning department in a number of different ways. Number one, in person. Planning is located on the west wing of Town Hall. Applications, doc, application documents, plans are available for inspection between the hours of 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM, or by phone, 631-957-3103, or by email, planningcomments, that's one word, planningcomments@townofbabylonny.gov. Okay. Uh, thank you very much.
Please, can you comment on how and where we hear the decision that's made?
Uh, the question, counsel, the question was asked about how and where they hear when the decision is made?
Well, the decision.
Stand up, please. Get that for the record.
The decision here for this board will, um, will not be made, will not be made until all the other hearings, in particular, the town board was to change the zone and hear this case. So you'll be notified of these other meetings that are required. This record, uh, the written record will remain open to get those decisions. Then the site plan and the special unit permit will be decided after that.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, sure. All right. Counselor, do you want to note what the gentleman just said regarding the opposite?
Sure. All the petitions that have been submitted, either online or otherwise, have been entered into the record, uh, as discussed tonight, and will be read and retained by this board for future records.
And they are in opposition to the application.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, hold on, one second. Okay, okay, I, hold on. I think there was a good question that was asked about the status of the application. Again, you have, the planning department is open. You have all that information. You can contact them, uh, the planning department to follow up on the status of the application at any time, and they will certainly, uh, provide an update on where they are with any of the reviews. So feel free to call them, feel free to email them, uh, and feel free to, of course, uh, visit them. Okay. All right, thank you very much. One more question. The gentleman, I'm sorry, is somebody back there? Over here, ma'am.
Could you tell us the best way to be informed of when the zoning hearing will take place? Because the way that we learned about this, what's happening this evening, was based off of social media, and I really think that the people who live near the bowling alley and everyone else who's affected by this pandemic.
Okay, counsel, talk about the legal requirements. Please stand, put it on the mic. Put it in the microphone. Is that not working?
I guess I'm saying, if you're going to tell me that a sign's maybe.
No, no, I understand what you're saying.
That's not good enough.
Right.
The other hearings should have a notice requirement, like for this one, with mailings to people within a certain radius, and also there will be postings of those other hearings on the sign, on, on the property. Um, so.
About 200 feet, on seven houses away, I can see them.
Yeah, no.
Well, those, those requirements are determined by the town code, but I think with the number of interested people here, if those, um, uh, requirements are satisfied that are set forth in the town code, I think your community, you know, can spread the word, and I'm sure no one will be left out, but.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I just want to get closer. That, what the lawyers tell you is what legally has to happen. Also, all town meetings are posted on the Town of Babylon website, all of them. So everybody here, I would urge you to check into that on a regular basis.
Town of Babylon website, Katie.
All right. I'm sorry, sir. One last gentleman. Mr. Ryan.
The chairman of this board, they're responsible for this all, okay, and they heard, and they thank you. Right now, this is going to the town, all right? They're not going to send a national court department to make a meeting at that. The idea is, we have our hundreds, 250,000 kids. That 150,000 means we're all, 150,000 means they can contact us, but contact the council, all right?
Okay.
Let them know how to do, get your names, get your friends. It is on the website. Do you check it every day? No, but now you have it. If you don't want this thing done, get on the website and find out what the next thing is.
Okay, this is the last comment, sir. Thank, thank you. I'm glad you clarified that.
I think customary to have only had you, the public, 10 days before a hearing was going to happen, also, also, the way most of these people have learned about it is through my Facebook community page, one way or another. That's how a lot of people dance to the law.
I understand.
To do it again.
Okay, all right. Yeah, well, thank you all for coming. We do have to conclude this right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
He won't move back.
Back to our agenda. Okay. It's another public hearing, right?
No, it's a meeting.
Okay, the planning board shall have the right to have any information as presented by the applicant. If any such information is later found to be inaccurate or incorrect, the planning board may determine that any approvals, building permits, or other actions previously granted in connection with the application are null and void. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
That's.
Oh, I got to unmute this one. Okay, go ahead. Start from the beginning.
Uh, Kelly Bennett, 1257 Ural Road, Bay Shore, New York, 11706.
Okay, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please proceed.
So we're here tonight based on, um, a 25-foot lot adjustment. Uh, my client owns a bunch of property in Windange. This is her dream to develop this particular lot.
Mm-hmm.
So the 25-foot lot line change basically gets us to conforming lots. The property's located in residential C-zone. Um, the tricky part, really, it is not in the sewer district. Uh, we do have Board of Health approval on one of the lots, and we're waiting on the approval on.
Are you going to be putting in one of the advanced septic systems?
Yes, we, yep, we have to, so.
Okay, yes, I know you do. I just want to get that for the record.
With the groundwater, as you guys know, in that area can be a little, um, tricky. So we've.
I know, you've got a high-water table.
Yeah, we've nailed down all of that design with an engineer, and all of that seems to work. Um, so basically, the renderings are included. Um, it's, we're proposing two new dwellings, obviously conforming to all setbacks. Um, they're single-family. The client did review and agrees to all the covenants and restrictions.
So you're, I was just going to ask you, so your client has agreed to all the covenants?
Yes.
All the restrictions and all of the conditions?
Absolutely.
Okay, please proceed.
Yeah, so basically, they're beautiful houses. They were custom-designed to how she wanted them. Um, so they are a little bit raised. I think they came out really beautiful. We'll make sure they're finished differently. Um.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, I know. They, they really did come out beautiful.
Jerry, what do you think of that? Which one do you like the best? Why don't you say you like them both? This is like heavy choke. This is like, this is like heavy choke. Okay, please proceed.
Yeah, no, she's just excited. The, the property, I, I know. I have a CO for a dwelling many, many moons ago, I think, on the lot, which is Address 22, but nothing's been on these properties, so it would be a huge, you know, improvement.
Yes, it will be. Okay, what else? That's it?
Yeah, pretty much. Any questions from the board?
I noticed on the site plan, the type of tree that you're proposing is something that the town and the DEC isn't really fond of.
Okay, we are here to be open, especially to landscaping.
So you would be willing to identify different species of tree to bring in and follow the DEC regulations and requests?
Absolutely.
Excellent.
And any preference to the, to this board?
Okay, um, could you just state for the record, the DEC problem with that?
Yes, so that, the sugar maple tree is in a basic, it's looking a lot like, so they have twelve different forms. Without that, they submit a different.
100%. I think we changed it to a sugar maple because we thought we needed to, so we could easily, uh, change to whatever's acceptable.
That's easy enough, and if you have any questions, feel free to call them.
Thank you.
Okay, what else? Anything else? All right.
Jim, I just want to reiterate to this man that the covenants are, that are going to apply are, that these homes are single-family, owner-occupied, no, no accessory apartments, and that means, all of that means no rentals.
Absolutely.
And that will be a covenant that runs with the land. Uh, that will bind any success of the owners.
I explained that clearly, and the homeowner understands, and we're used to filing those CNRs, so we'll be right out at the county as soon as we get them.
Okay, thank you. Great, thank you. Thank you for asking the question. Okay, anything else? No? All right, could we have a motion? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board regarding this application? No, okay. It's not a public hearing. Okay, it's a site plan. All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
An informational hearing, you're right. Okay, we need a motion to close here. A motion by Jerry, a second by Dan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I hope you all have a great night, and thank you for your time.
Okay, that is the last of our live stream since our informational meeting, hearing is over.